Some substitutes, any questions with Section B? With not moving to policy, we have a title change that Mr. DeAndrea discussed before. Any questions with E? With not moving to F, curriculum, those are our hits ninety-six to one hundred and four. And there's also an addition, which is number two, which is not on your sheets. This is what the board had done in closed session. The Board of Education has requested to approve the findings of the Student Disciplinary Committee with respect to the Sablemore Memorial High School student as a result of the hearing which took place on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve. Any questions with Section L? With none, moving to G. These are some lesson school activities that are listed in number one. There's the Deco Leadership Conference, which is always excellent, and we wish them well. Some bomber Olympics, which is number three. Any questions with G, Co-Creator? With none, moving to H. Some joint transportation changes, approval of nine trips, some winter guard schedule. And that concludes my report. So, Ms. Brady, as I said, I would be done by eight-thirty, and I'm done at eight-twenty-eight. So, I want to thank the youngsters. If you want to leave, you're certainly welcome. Some of you guys look like it's a little bit longer night. It'll be a lot more fun when you're sitting up here with us. So, we can't wait for you guys to come next week, two weeks from now. It's February twenty-second. Okay, guys? If you would like to leave, you are dismissed. With your powers, you may leave. Thank you very much. That's it, twenty-two.
Does any board members have any other questions on the agenda before I open it up to the public? I'd like to open up the public portion. Does anyone have any questions on Agenda Ios only? Anyone? Okay. There are no questions. Can I have a motion to approve the superintendent's report?
No move.
Second.
No one, I am lower two, Section B, and number five, Section B. Yes, and all others.
Number five. And yes, everybody else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Bishada?
On the Finance section, on page three, I'll be voting no on number two, I'll be voting no on number five, and I'll be voting no on page five, on number nineteen.
Mr. Sayah?
Yes.
Mr. DePinto?
No on number five under B, Finance.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes. You should do it.
Okay, no with the exception of under B, number five.
No, you say no with the exception.
Yes, exactly.
Yes, okay.
Mr. Macken?
Yes or no exception.
Mrs. Rucchio?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.
Mrs. Backo?
I'll also be voting no on number five on page three. Yes for the rest.
It needs to be noted that the approval established of a new position is not approved.
Can I ask any direct approval boards?
Sorry. A couple items, I just came back, as I mentioned, from Washington DC with National School Boards. I have an update with regard to the Elementary, Secondary, and Educate, Elementary-Secondary Education Act. There are two bills that authorize it, or actually reauthorize it, which will make the changes from no child left behind. One is in the House, one is in the Senate. Both of them are different. The House one is expected to be marked up and hopefully out of committee and posted for a vote sometime in February or March. The Senate one, from what we're told, most likely will not be taken up until the late duck Congress. So, we're not expecting any type of reauthorization anytime soon, which means we're going to keep, we're basically going to keep going with no child left behind until that's done. The board self-evaluation, has anyone had problems completing it? I know Mrs. Trapp had some issues completing it. Anyone else?
I did.
Helen from Mrs. DeAndrea.
I have trouble logging on to do it.
All right. Has everyone else, Mr. Bishada?
I had trouble logging on also, that's why I haven't completed it.
Yep.
Okay. All right. I will contact the help desk with NJ SBA and see if I can get you some information about how to correct that issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, it's just the four of you.
Do they all have the same issue?
I didn't have that issue.
No, but it's just, so is the password not good? I can't even figure out what the problem is. It could be, but I made questions. And I'm usually pretty good with that.
You're a technology. You can't say anything.
Okay. So, it's Mrs. Esposito, Mrs. Esposito, Mr. Bishada, Mrs. Trapp, and Mrs. Rucchio.
How's this side of the table, okay?
It must be at that side of the table, maybe. Okay. So, I will contact them. As of last count, on the website today, I believe it was two hundred and thirty school districts have moved their election to November. Out of the five hundred and eighty-seven which are eligible to, we'll be discussing what Sablemore's going to do shortly. And the last piece...
How many voted no?
I did ask that question, and unfortunately NJ SBA doesn't have that information because if a board chooses not to take any action, there's no no vote. There's nothing that goes and gets filed. It's just that they declined to take action.
Do we know how many of that five hundred and so on already taken action or no action? So, two hundred and thirty-three of...
Two hundred and thirty out of the five eighty-seven have chosen to move it. We don't know how many have decided not to because if they don't take action, then it just stays where it is and nothing gets really...
And they're asking that everybody submit by February seventeen, if they are. So, you know by February seventeen, only those that have, and you can assume those that haven't have not, aren't.
But, because no action, I guess, being...
There is no action required.
No action means no action.
Okay.
And the last piece is the anti-bullying, harassment, intimidation, and bullying law, which we've been following since September. The Alamoche Board of Education filed a complaint with the local council on mandates. The local council on mandates reviewed the law and determined that the law does require districts, or can require districts, to spend additional funds, and that there is no appropriation from the state legislature for those funds. Therefore, the law is now considered unconstitutional unless within sixty days the legislature can either appropriate additional funds or change the law such that it does not require any type of unfunded cost to local school districts. So, right now, the law is technically still in effect for the next sixty days. We're waiting outcome of the state legislature to find out what happens and where we go from here. That concludes my report.
Committee reports? I'm going to do the Education Council first because I think I'll be quicker. You all received the minutes of the meeting. Post of the time, we did discuss the parent portal, which Ms. Eichner just updated you on, and some of the concerns and questions that the teachers had. The other topics, we touched on copy machine issues, and what most of the issue problem was with the parent portal. Finance?
Finance, I'll be brief too. We had a meeting on January fourth. We met for about four or five hours. We're getting close, but we had some key estimates in there that when we finally got more solid numbers, they gave a bunch higher than what we were estimating, so that threw us off a little bit. We're going to wait for a technology meeting come up this week to help solve. We have iron out those numbers. Looks like we have to revisit freshman lacrosse now to see if we finish that because it would fit in the picture now too. Other than that progress, we have a meeting scheduled for the sixteenth.
Does any other committee chair person wish to speak? Okay, discussion. If we can do the Ohio file settlement first, we did ask the student council representative, does anyone have any other suggestions or... I had received this week something, it was backpacks where, and I think I'm going to ask if you could just send this off to the student council since you left already. It's called Stand For Children Fourteenth Annual Backpack Campaign, where they fill backpacks for children in foster care. So, I thought this was something that related to education, that maybe they might be interested if we choose to, if the student council chooses to sell the merchandise.
I'm just doing a shovel and...
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments, or we all want to wait for the next meeting?
Wait, 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 come back.
Okay. Next. Board attorney?
Yes.
Board elections.
So, I'm honored that you have welcomed me back to your public portion of your meeting. And I've been asked, as I understand it, to come and talk to the board in public about the possibility of changing your elections for, I guess, at least the next four years, since that's the statute would require, to November, from April to November. As Kevin suggested, and I hadn't looked all that recently at the School Boards Association's tally, two hundred and thirty, I guess, of the school districts have just chosen to do so. But again, I've been seeing this, this really is, and to address what Mike was saying, a sort of case-by-case basis. Some have, I can tell you from our experience with our clients, specifically chosen not to move forward. For example, some don't even have, have not chosen to do this yet, and don't have meetings before February seventeenth, which is the date that's been given to us by the Board of Education, excuse me, Department of Education, by when we have to move the elections. That's not to say that at some point after February, this couldn't be done somehow. But that's the date that's been suggested as a good date to make a determination by. So, that will leave you with tonight, I guess, as the night that you would have to decide whether or not to, or should decide whether or not to move your elections. Obviously, the benefit, as everyone knows, of moving the elections is that the budget would not be required to be voted upon by the voters, assuming it was within the two percent cap. And it's something that obviously many districts see as a benefit. Additionally, there could be, you know, greater voter turnout, I guess, in a November election versus an April election. But that's just, of course, theoretical based on what's going on in particular year. So, I will be here to answer any of your questions. As you begin this discussion, I know it could be a hearty one, so go forth.
Also, one of the concerns I had was on the ballot. They said our names would be separate. Because one of my concerns I had always had was the politicizing the process by moving it to November. Do you, I don't know if you'll know this, but how would it appear to a voter, like if you walked in the voter booth, how would they determine? And would we be easily recognizable, or could we be ignored and actually lessen our voter turnout?
Again, without seeing how a ballot is actually done, I'm sure it will be different by county. The statute is relatively clear on that. It just says that those names should be listed separately. And, you know, I imagine that knowing the way that elections are done in New Jersey, there will be some guidance at some point issued by the Division of Elections, the Attorney General's Office, about the manner in which it should be done. So, at some point, there may be a universal nature in which school board members are placed on the ballot, but at this point, I don't think that the answer to that is clear.
Okay. And the other question I had was...
At my county meeting, we did discuss it, because our county business administrator is involved in the process. He'd said that the one thing that they were told is that their names will be separate, and there will be no party lines associating with individuals. That part they said was conveyed to, at least at a county level, that their names would not appear along with any party line and separate so that people know that the board elections are separate from those of any party line.
Okay. So, like, your eyes wouldn't necessarily go across and say, okay, um...
That's by statute. I mean, you are, this is a non, you're not allowed to declare yourself a partisan with respect to your, specifically with respect to your role as a board member. You can say whatever you want as a matter of free speech, but you can't declare yourself a Republican or a Democrat, for example, as a candidate. So, you would not be able to align yourself that way, for example, with local municipal candidates say, or county candidates for a public office.
Would it be all, like, all the way off to the right? Like, you got the Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, that, I don't know, and we'd be all in the queue?
The way it got explained at our county meeting is most likely what you would see is the normal format that you currently see, and most likely underneath it would appear the board election. Their layout, but there is nothing specific.
Yeah. And I got to just say, Amidio, with all due respect to your organization, the answer is no one knows at this point. Although they may speculate, no one knows. All it says is they have to be listed separately.
Okay. So, and then if there was a budget vote as well, that would go on wherever with the board candidate?
It would go, no, it would go, just because this is the way that the machines are set up, it would go as a question, just like any other public question on November ballot, for example.
Oh, okay. So, it wouldn't necessarily be on the board's side, like, if there was a referendum question, if, you know, like, not necessarily the budget, if there was a referendum?
No, a second question.
A second question.
Or something above the two percent, for example, if you ask your voters.
Right. So, that could be...
It would be listed with, in the place for the electronic machines designated for questions, which is a separate, as you know, for those of you who voted, and obviously everyone here votes, it would be listed in the place where questions are designated.
Okay. So, all the questions could be together?
Correct.
If there were other questions.
You know, whether the state should build a brand-new stadium for a major league baseball team would be the first question. The second question would be, should we have a three percent budget this year?
And you're locked into doing this for four years.
For four years.
Yeah. The statute's specific on that. You have to be, once you make this decision, you're locked in for four years. So, even if you made it next year, you decide not to, you decide to pass this year, and next year you decide to do it, you'd be four years from next year, it's going to be five years.
We can do it next year. We don't have to wait four years.
You can always do it, but as soon as you do do it, you're locked in for four years.
Locked in for four years. Okay. The other question I had was with concern to cost, and I know one of the things they said was to save money, but it also said we had to negotiate with the board of elections. My concern is, how do you actually negotiate with board of elections? We don't actually have anywhere else to go, so I assume they give us a price, that's what we pay.
I'll say negotiating with the board of elections sounds like a familiar...
Yes. And somehow, we haven't all been that successful negotiating with the board of elections.
I don't know if the answer to your question. What I have seen, obviously, in some districts, I mean, Amidio, how much money approximately does it cost this board to have your April election?
Now that we've reduced it around twenty-five thousand, but I did get a call from the Mr. Volker at the county, and I had that specific conversation with him. He said, there is a fixed cost for running the elections. And obviously, that fixed cost is currently spread amongst twenty-three school districts. That fixed cost is then going to be spread amongst the remaining school districts that choose not to move. So, can, is there a specific dollar value? No, because until they determine how many school districts are not moving, that's how they then determine the cost associated, because he indicated the fixed costs are the fixed cost regardless of how many elected, how many people are...
Say what those costs were, the total fixed.
No, he didn't get into that.
The higher the schools that move, the higher the cost is going to go up.
For the ones that don't move, yeah.
And I would expect that this would be less of a negotiation and more of what the county board of elections decides, based on Mr. Vogel's recommendation, which is how, as I understand the way it works over in New Brunswick. So, you know, you'll just be told, if you decide to do this, and most of the other school districts in the county, for example, decide to do this, they'll, at some point, and, you know, they'd have a while from now, almost a year, I guess, it would be less than a year, but you know what I mean, next fall, they'll have the chance to sit down and figure out exactly what is your charge, and theoretically, it would be less than the twenty-five thousand you're paying now. Theoretically, although still, it's possible, well, no, it's...
Oh, if you jump up, don't move.
Yeah. If you move your elections, it's likely to be less money, and that's one of the incentives for certain districts in particular to do so. Although, you know, you, as I recall, your polling places are open only from two to nine.
Yeah, right. We have less than to save money.
You know, and obviously, there are fewer workers required and all that kind of stuff for an election of, you know, just a school board as opposed to a November election, which this year, for example, includes the presidential election.
Does anyone else have any questions, comments?
I'm really concerned that we would get lost in the November election. So, as much as I, and I spent hours and days and weeks thinking about this and talking about it, and as much as I know it would help the students, I think, I just think that, again, it all lost, and it is a bad idea. And then we could always revisit it next year.
I agree. I'm curious, what the, besides saving us money, because I don't think that's why Christie's doing this, why does he want the election in November? I want, I don't, I don't know what the motivation is.
I'll tell you that the only thing we heard from the governor's office on this was after the legislation was passed, and there was sort of a lull because of the death of the legislator that day, that night, they had that law. They were sort of, everybody was waiting here with the governor's office going to say about this, and then there was a lull because obviously, out of respect for the legislator who passed, there wasn't any communication. Suddenly, we heard that somebody from the governor's office expressed, I don't remember, was the press secretary, someone said that, you know, the governor would prefer to have a mandate that all boards move to November as opposed to this choice, which sort of leaves everything in limbo, and I guess creates some confusion from one district to a district to another, and board elections and everyone else, and hence this conversation we're having tonight. You know, I don't know. I think the idea of just streamlining and increasing the process, there is a statement, it's not the governor's statement, but it's a statement from the Assembly and the Senate. I don't have it with me, but I could get a copy for you at some point, you know, tomorrow or the next day, I could forward you the reasoning as to why the legislature thought this was such a great idea coming out of committee.
Right. But if they did think it was such a great idea, that's why I don't understand why they didn't just do it. And I guess they're just making this more complicated.
You know, I guess I've heard...
I feel like they're pointing off a decision because they couldn't make one, or it couldn't come together.
Well, some people describe legislatures as sausage factories, right? So, there's a little bit of this and a little bit of that, which ends up coming out, that a little bit of this and a little bit of that that ends up coming out as the final product. In this case, that may be, but ultimately, this is what we're stuck with, and this is what you faced with Williams tonight.
And if I could, our, my association state representative felt that some of the reasons were that right now, there are, there are controls in place that put the board in a place where they can control their own destiny by the two percent tax cap, and that was one of the reasons they felt it got pushed. Again, the cost savings, although twenty-five thousand, some people may argue is not a great cost saving.
Well, that's the total. We don't know what the cost savings is.
No, but I'm saying, I'm using hours. You probably could look at it twenty-five, that that cost savings is something that you can look at, but they, our executives indicated that more of it had to do with their, the tax cap that's in place more or less allows the board to operate in a way that you don't need more approval because there are other things in place to help you control that.
But I guess my point is, if they felt so strongly and thought all of that, why just didn't they vote to do that?
I'm not sure if there's some statute, if there's some statute...
That case again, before we watch the sun come up here. It's all irrelevant. We have the decision to make tonight. What the rationale of why they're moving it is all irrelevant. What we're going to do?
Curious if you want to hear why they did it, it might have the decision.
No, I don't, I think this is an opportunity.
And I also think that we should, let's sit back and see what happens in November, and if it works, if it works well, then fine, we'll do it for next year. And if it doesn't work well, which I think most of us are very concerned about, then we'll just stay with the ankle. Let them work out all their problems and...
I'm in agreement with Mrs. Trapp. I've got several concerns with this. I mean, obviously, the financial benefits to the district are clear, you know, in terms of keeping it, I'm sorry, in terms of moving it to November, because there's no vote on the, required on the budget. So, financial piece is clear. But in all the years I've been involved in this, I have never seen a group in education jump at anything so quick. No matter what is proposed, no matter how good the idea, we have to have a committee, we have to study it, we have to test it, and I'm just stunned that all these school districts, and I'm even stunned at the superintendents, who all just said, hey, this is great, let's do it. Some of the concerns I have are, the budget says, first of all, the legislation says that if your budget's at cap, you don't need a vote. We're all assuming that that cap is two percent. What happens if it's one point seven five? What happens if that cap gets changed to one point five oh? Now, if we need additional funding, we've got to put that question on the November ballot. So, that's a concern to me.
I don't understand that.
Well, hang on, hang on.
You made, you made a comment.
The legislation, if I read it, the legislation is if your budget is at cap, not at two percent, is at cap. Let's say next year, they come back to us and say, you know what? Cap's no longer two percent. It used to be four, now it's two. What about next year if it's one point five? Now, if we need to go more than one point five, our second question goes on the November ballot, which may or may not be a good thing. In addition to that, next year is a presidential election year. More people come out in a presidential election year historically than any other election. I'm not sure that's the year to field test something like this and make a change.
Well, but wait, if we do it, it would be this year, right?
Right.
It would be this year, not next year.
Oh, so, for this year, okay.
Right. And this November sixth is the presidential election.
Presidential.
Okay. So, all right, when you said next year, I just got that.
Yes.
Okay, but it's two thousand and twelve.
So, so, I'm concerned about that piece. But the other piece that really concerns me, and you'll just pardon me one second, I have visual aids. This is the mail that I received for the November election this past year on the candidates. All of this, twenty-five pieces about how this guy is a crook, how this guy is a liar, how the crook is lying about the other crook.
That's just for local.
This is local, this is freeholder, this is all the stuff that came to my home address, addressed to residents. And on the school board election, I received one postcard. I don't know how one postcard is going to compete with all of this. And if we decide that we want to become this, we're going to need to start soliciting funding from those organizations, and I can't see that that funding would come without a price tag, which ultimately will lead to a change in culture in your local school board. So, I have real concerns about doing this now. Let's let another district take the lead on this, maybe for a year, maybe for two years, and let's come back, and as Dr. Phil says, say to them, how's that working for you? And then we can make a decision as to what's best for Sablemore.
I think even if we do, we, I think that every town is different, and what necessarily might work for Olbridge might not work for us, even if they do come back next year and say that it did work.
True.
I don't want to commit, say, oh, Olbridge thought it was wonderful, but I think we're very different.
Well, very well said. And I'm sure you was making opposite argument equally as well said.
Well, I don't buy any of that, honestly. Let me ask you a question. How many years you been on the board, man?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years. How many budgets got passed in each year?
Roughly six.
Not even, not even. I've been in Sablemore since ninety-six.
Ninety-three.
I've been in Sablemore since ninety-six. Budget got passed in two thousand and five, budget got passed next year.
I'm an optimist.
Okay? Every time, every board member speaks here, all I hear from them is that every decision I make, I'm making for the kids. You tell me what other decision you made in the last eighteen years that would be more for the kids than this, okay? We're under cap. Last year, we came out, we got a one point four, right around. We haven't even gone to the two percent cap, right? So, now we have an opportunity to say, I know there's people there, I know why there's some people here today to tell us how outrageous this is, we're going to take the vote away from, they want to vote on the budget. These are people that are going to vote no, no matter what you do, and have voted no for every year they've voted on the school budget. Now, we have an opportunity to pass a budget, so we know that we can fund, when we negotiate with our unions, we know what we have in the pot, and we're going to sit here, all pompous, and we're going to say, you know, we're not going to move this. I find it peculiar that you're up for election this year, and I'm not saying it has anything to do with, I find that peculiar. We have an opportunity here to get a freaking budget passed, so we can build roofs. Is anybody on this board, and I'm asking this question, is anybody on this board, one, our budget, when it fails to go to that crew that's sitting in the council now, after the tsunami is up going on, does anybody want them to hack another million or two? Mr. Volker just told us that he spent five or six hours in the budget meeting. Ms. Backo, you were in that budget meeting, and you're struggling for days cutting that budget down two million dollars to get to a two percent cap. And now you're going to put the budget out there, and it's going to go down again, okay? And now you're going to sit around again and find another million. And I would suggest, everybody who votes no, you can sit down there and tell us where that budget cut's going to come from. They're going to take a roof away, they're going to take all kinds of different things away, but then we're going to sit here, we're going to pat ourselves on the back and say, we do everything for the kids, okay? This is absurd. You know, we got to fund the school district, and if we, budgets keep going down, then the cap next year is on a levy that has been decreased by a couple of million dollars. It keeps getting smaller...
might work for Old Bridge might not work for us, even if they do come back next year and say that it did work.
True.
I, I don't want to commit, say, oh, Old Bridge thought it was wonderful, but I, I think we're very different.
Well, very well said.
And I'm sure you was making opposite argument equally as well said.
Well, I don't buy any of that nonsense. Let me ask you a question. How many years you been on the board?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years. How many budgets got passed in the last year?
Roughly six.
Not even, not even. I've been in Saebel since ninety-
Ninety-three.
I've been in Saebel since 96. Budget got passed in 2005, budget got passed next year. Every time, every board member speaks here, all I hear from them is that every decision I make, I'm making for the kids. You tell me what other decision you made in the last 18 years that would be more for the kids than this, okay? We're under cap. Last year, we came out, we got a 1.4, right around. We haven't even gone to a 2% cap, right? So now we have an opportunity to say, I know there's people there, I know why there's some people here today to tell us how outrageous this is, we're going to take the vote away from them, they want to vote on the budget. These are people that are going to vote no, no matter what you do, and have voted no for every year they voted on the school budget. Now we have an opportunity to pass a budget, so we know that we can fund, when we negotiate with our unions, we know what we have in the pot, and we're going to sit here, all pompous, and we're going to say, you know, we're not going to move this. I find it peculiar that you're up for election this year, and I'm, I'm not saying it has anything to do with it, but I find that peculiar. We have an opportunity here to get a freaking budget passed, so we can build roofs. Is anybody on this board, and I'm asking this question, is anybody on this board, one, our budget, when it fails to go to that crew that's sitting in the council now, after the tsunami has gone on, does anybody want them to hack another million or two? Mr. Balka just told us that he spent five or six hours in the budget meeting, Ms. Backo, you were in that budget meeting, and you're struggling for days cutting that budget down $2 million to get to a 2% cap. And now you're going to put the budget out there, and it's going to go down again, okay? And now you're going to sit around again and find another million, and I would suggest everybody who votes no, you can sit down there and tell us where that budget cut's going to come from. They're going to take a roof away, they're going to take all kinds of different things away, but then we're going to sit here, we're going to pat ourselves on the back and say, we do everything for the kids, okay? This is absurd. You know, we got to fund the school district, and if we, we, budgets keep going down, then the cap next year is on a levy that has been decreased by a couple of million dollars, and it keeps getting smaller and smaller and smaller, and we're going to bankrupt ourselves. Now, I have something that's on the table for the public to look at, and I pass it to everybody on the board. This came out in the January 8 edition of the Stalletage, and I find it peculiar that nobody ever brings this to our attention when things reflect positively upon this school district. And I know there's been people out there saying, oh, there he goes again with the facts, but here it is. If you look at this, this is Middlesex County property taxes, it's on the table, and you can look at it. It says right here, for the last five years, it looked at all the borough municipalities, county, and school district taxes. The last five years in Saebel, the municipal taxes has gone up 31%. The county portion of that's gone up 28, that's 23%, and the school district portion has gone up 8% over five years, okay? 8% over five years. So we're not loving budgets, we're not coming up with budgets that, that are excessive. And we're going to sit here now, have this opportunity to move this election in November, keep the budget below cap, and everybody here lives in town, I pay taxes too, we're not going to come up with a 2% budget, we don't have to go to 2%. We've shown we haven't done that. We've come up with 1.4, 1.5 that I recall that this cap has been stated. And now we're going to sit here with all this nonsense to show us this is why we shouldn't move it? That, that's absurd. You know, I'm telling you, Mrs. Sayak, if I was up for election this year, I'd encourage more people to come out and vote. What do we have coming out for school? 14, 15, 16%? And we need to cater to that percentage? You want to do something for the kids, ladies and gentlemen, you have an opportunity to do it right now. Let's get a damn budget passed and defend our school. Every time the state puts out a report card, they tell, oh, look at Saebel, Saebel's $2,000 per student under adequate-
By, by the way, Ms. McEnamore-
It's absurd.
We made number one this year.
I know.
We were number two on the actual-
That's right, and that's another point. The, the state school report card said that Saebel, with the district size we have, more than 3,500 students, we're the number one, number one efficient district in the state. We spend the most, most per student capital. And that's never something I've been proud of. And now we're going to cut the budget further, and let, let these governing bodies cut another million, two million? Absurd.
Well, we're not necessarily cutting the budget. Either way, we're still going to put out a 2% budget, am I correct?
Is it going to pass? Is it going to pass, Mrs. McEnamore?
Well, one guarantee?
Okay. So why would we even want to risk that and then sit here and say, everything we do, we do for the kids? Ridiculous. I think this calls for an opportunity to step up and be leaders. Don't worry about the fallout.
Mrs. Backo?
Yes, Mr. Shabbat.
I will not take the vote away from the people. Point blank.
Good.
We live in a, we live in a democracy, and the rights that we have, one of the main rights is that we can vote.
Okay, Mr. Rashad, so why don't you go to the next council meeting, assist one of them make a resolution that the people start voting on this in the budget.
I've done that, because that-
I think that's very interesting.
I've done that, and you know what happened? They laughed at me. Why? Because we've got pompous A-holes sitting there, point blank.
I'm not going to like that.
Okay? That's the issue that goes there.
But, but, but we're talking, we're talking about-
And I'm talking about, well, let me, can I please have a question?
Just keep in mind, if this doesn't go well, they're going to be deciding on our budget, so-
You served in the military, you defended this country and all the rights that we have. 22 years you put in the military, am I correct?
That's correct.
All right? And you defended the rights of everyone in this, in this country.
Yeah, I don't have to agree with him, I defended it.
No, no. I don't agree with everything that goes on in, in, in town, or in the country, or whatever, but one of the rights that everyone has is the right to vote, and that's a very important issue that, that this town, I cannot give up. I can't give up, I'm not going for socialism, okay? We're a democracy.
I, I, I think this is, this is a little stretched. Mr. Rashad, you sit at the, at the Buildings and Grounds Committee, you tell us, we need a roof in the middle school, we need heating ventilators over here, we need, how are we going to pay for that if we have an opportunity here to guarantee that we can increase our levy by 2% to pay for it?
But it's very simple. If we present a budget that the taxpayers accept, it's going to pass.
Ha ha.
That's all.
Okay.
Show people that we're spending, Mike, it's about, it's not about the money, it's how the money's spent in this town. That's what the taxpayers are angry about.
So you're telling me that ranked number one in the state of New Jersey, Saebel School District, the number one district ranked in the state of New Jersey for, for the least amount of money spent per student, and you're telling me we, we got proof the people, we can come up with a budget that's fair? Come on!
I, I can't, I can't go against that, I, I won't. But everyone should have the right to vote on the municipal budget, they should have the right to vote on the state budget. That's the issue. And the issue that comes right now is that the pompous people that we elected in the Senate and to the legislature, they pawned it off on Board of Education and councils. They couldn't do the job because they know that they wouldn't get reelected again. Because they're taking away the right of the people.
When a budget fails, when a budget fails, Mr. Rashad, who does that hurt? Does it hurt Tom Rashad? Does it hurt Mike McEnamore? No, who's it hurt, Tom? Who's it hurt? Who's, Tom, who's it hurt?
The education process.
Okay, and, and who's the education process for, Tom?
The students.
Okay. I rest my case.
But again, the point comes down, when we present a budget to the taxpayers, that they know that the money that is there is going to be spent appropriately, they'll go for it.
So you're telling me since 1996, since I lived in town, we never had a school board that can present a budget that is acceptable to the taxpayer? Nobody, nobody ever did that?
All right, I'll, I'll give you a prime example. I'll give you a prime example of what's going on. For 20 years, the first thing that was cut out of a budget when it failed in this town was capital projects, right?
Well, that's not necessarily true. I don't necessarily agree with that. I don't, you know, and for all the years I've been going to council meetings, I, I can't say that they've cut capital projects always. And I have seen them infrequently cut capital projects. I think a lot of the capital projects sometimes are cut.
If this budget goes down-
Yeah, capital projects got-
From this board.
On this board.
From the board of that.
Not necessarily down here.
Listen, I'm okay, look, I will support whatever the board decision. I'm not going to be the one to go out there and say, you know, these board members voted no, and this is why we have the situation. But be advised, that if the budget goes down, that sitting council, at minimums, they take one to 1.5 out of this budget. Now, if we have to cut things, there's not much left to cut, you can ask Mr. Balka. If we want to cut courtesy busing for elementary school kids, if we want to cut full-day kindergarten, you go ahead and do that. When these people come up to the meeting, and those people that voted no can explain why they didn't have the opportunity, they had the opportunity to secure the budget with an estate law of 2% and failed to do so. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Uh, does anyone on the side of the table wish to speak?
Then I'd like to open up the phone to you.
Okay, one second. Does any, relax. Does anybody want to make a motion to pass this?
Oh, you got to open up the phone. Want to get some comment?
I just want to see where we're going. We only put a resolution on the table if, we don't have to put a resolution on the table unless five people wish it, is that how we're going to run this?
Motion and a second.
Yeah, there's a motion, there's a second.
A second, then we could do it, okay.
You could entertain it, and then we'd have it, and then we'd give our people.
All right, now, I'm going-
You don't have to, open it up to the public. If you wish to, you may.
Well, we didn't get to the public portion yet, so I'd rather open up to the public so that they have the option to speak on everything.
We're not voting on it now.
We have the chance to vote, but after the public portion.
Okay.
Okay? Because we still have another issue that I think the public may wish to comment on as well. So if there's no more comments on this topic, Mr. DeAndrea, can you remove to Buildings and Grounds? This is yours.
I guess, at this point, yes. It was recommended at, at least one of the last meetings, that the Buildings and Grounds Committee look into a possible referendum. If speaking with the chair of that committee, Mr. Rashad recommended that this should be a full discussion of the board and not part of the committee, and if I'm not correct, Mr. Rashad, correct, correct me. He believes that there should not be a, a decision by three individuals and the president who sits in on the meeting. It should be a full board discussion, and I guess at that point, if it is going to be a full board discussion, I would need to know what the board would like to have as far as information to move forward. In the past, the only thing that I recommended to a board when looking to do a referendum is you work with an architect or an engineer, and you develop a feasibility study to get a true value of where your costs are in the projects you want to do. That's how you've done it in other districts, so that you have a clear estimate and a line item detail of those items that you wish to have to take.
Could we just back up a minute here? I, I think you're about the cart before the horse. This was, the way I understood it, you recommended this to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. The Buildings and Grounds Committee recommended to take it to the board rather, because they thought it was important. So what is it that you are recommending to do? I mean, referendum for what? Tell us what you want.
I believe, the last meeting or the meeting before, I had the handout that listed all of our capital projects that we feel are necessary. There were no dollar values attached to, and that's why if there was a dollar value that helps makes that decision, I don't know. I'm just giving you my best experience that they've used a feasibility study to drive the referendum.
Is this just for the facilities piece, or is this also for the redistricting committee?
No, this has nothing to do with redistricting committee. Actually, the redistrict committee is on meeting this week, so we're going to address that.
So that's not part of this discussion?
This is not, this is the Buildings and Grounds, it's not part of the redistricting committee.
Okay.
It's to address all of the facility needs that we have, instead of approaching it on a, a million-dollar-a-year basis for the next possible 20 years.
Does it make sense if, what, you know, what, assuming we're going to go the referendum route, I don't know if we're all bought into that or not, but would it make sense to not only do the facilities piece, but also wait for whatever redistricting committee recommendation is going to come out and couple it together?
I, I think it's up to the board when they-
Or not, but at least we know, we know what we're dealing with.
Yeah, I mean, I just, you know, I think this is up for board discussion. My personal thing is I think the overcrowding should, issue should supersede this one. So I, I'm not necessarily in support of this, but, and, and I did tell Mr. DeAndrea, I'm not going to support it, but it's going to, it's here for the board to discuss if they wish to do it. My opinion is the overcrowding issue should trump this one, but-
We got the list of projects, are there any, there weren't any numbers associated with that?
No, actually, the, the projects are too vast and too, too large, so our numbers. And again, any number that we put on it is not based on any solid investigation or evidence that you would do it. We're just attaching the numbers, saying, we think it's this, I mean, we can use the scenario with our roof, you know, we, architects using one number, and then what the project really comes in could be two drastically different numbers, so, again, that's where the feasibility study comes in, where you may pick the projects you want to do, and you somehow try to put a real, real value to help the discussion.
Do you have a timeframe on this? Because maybe the, like, what would be the timeframe from a decision based on?
Set the board, you have four, four times during the year to do it, September, December, March, and April. There's only four times now that you can do referendums.
Okay, just based on the last conversation, just for simplicity sake, we, we looked at a middle school roof tonight that we put on the agenda, which we may or possibly not do. Right now, there's another roof in the current budget, right now, as of today. That, that doesn't mean it's getting done, but just if that's a reference point for anyone.
Right, and the, just, the list was there to give you an idea of all the things that we know are major projects.
Right, and did the list include roofs too? Was that, roofs on it?
Yes, there were roofs in there. Slover roof, Eisenhower, Truman were all on there, on there, so you had univentilators, you had electrical-
Would you, do you want?
Some of the, some of the issues that are, have to be addressed are roofs, that's the main issue in the district. Univentilators in Truman, univentilators in Arlett, the rest of the univentilators in the middle school.
Eisenhower.
Eisenhower has issues that have to be corrected.
Windows.
Windows in all of the buildings. Slover's an issue that, what the board wants to address, that needs a total renovation. We're looking at the high school to get the section in the L-wing that needs a roof replacement on it. The list goes on and on and on, you know, there could be in addition put on to Eisenhower also, that is a discussion that's been going back and forth.
But that will be, that will be handled by the redistricting committee, that's not coming out.
Right, well, then you're looking at installing technology in, in all of the school system, upgrade it.
Was that in the refer, was that on your list too, technology?
I don't believe it was part of our list, because we strictly look at the facility needs.
L-wing, you said the L-wing roof in the high school?
Correct.
Technology?
No, no technology.
Well, they could be-
It could encompass into a referendum.
Right, we need technology, and what was the other thing you mentioned? You mentioned other?
Univents in all of the schools.
Univentilators in all the schools.
Right, and we're looking at Arlett and the old section, we're looking at Truman, we're looking at, Wilson is pretty well, I guess, we're looking at the middle school, I don't know if I missed one of the schools.
And you just want to, I mean, you could be looking at between 15 to 20 million dollars if you do-
15 to 20 million?
Possibly, if you look at all of those projects that you're talking about, I mean, you have the middle school roof, just right now, is 2 million, Truman is a million, Eisenhower is a million.
Two, million two.
A million two, so you got 2 million in just two buildings and roofing, and you haven't talked about univentilators, windows, and other things, so it could escalate-
Bathroom's another issue on all the schools that need renovation, they're in sad shape.
So passing budgets will help us reach those goals, right?
Emilio, would, would it make sense-
I'm not asking, okay, okay, well, I'm not either, but that's my point. You just list off litany of things that just need-
Okay, go, this is a new topic.
We're talking about money.
Would it make sense to follow Mrs. Backo's recommendation of, let's figure out where the redistricting committee is going first? Because if we're going to reopen Slover, or build an addition, or whatever, that's going to impact the other projects that we do.
But this was just put on here to see if the board wished to entertain it.
Does that, does that, and I'm asking you, does that make sense? I don't know.
Yes, yes, because it would change everything.
Just something we put on the table. With all the projects that we have out there and borrowing right now is at an all-time low.
So, as of right now, we'll budget for next year. And we'll wait for the redistricting committee to come back and then we'll decide what to do with the remaining projects.
Any other comments on this? No?
Mrs. Baco, I have one issue that, a lot of emails went back and forth between me and my committee about this athletic field. One of the issues that has to be addressed here is that the original engineer had a scope of the amount of work that had to be done. Other people stepped in and said that they wanted this and wanted that done. And they went ahead and brought people in, got the consultant to agree. And we, as the Buildings and Grounds Committee, were kind of left in the dark. And all of a sudden, all these resolutions were being put up for change orders and all. I think the idea is that if you need an issue addressed, come to the committee or come to the board. Don't take it upon yourself to go out. Let us, we're in charge of the taxpayer money and how it's handled. And I think this is an issue. If I'm correct, Mrs. Esposito, I believe you and I have corresponded about this. From now on, if there are issues, please, go to the committee or address the people that are in charge of this and let the board know what's going on.
And if I could, Mrs. Baco, I have to respond because now I'm not unsure as to the direction I'm receiving. In ten years, I've worked on close to a hundred million dollars in construction in this district. And we've always worked in the administrative office to bring in consultants and things to resolve and explore things that have come to our level that we don't have answers to and that we need answers to. So, in ten years, we've always brought in consultants to help us make answers and decisions. Never been required to bring it back to a committee or to a board before moving ahead with an issue that has come up to our level that we don't have the answers to now.
But we're asking you to be accountable for it now.
And if that's the direction of the full board...
It is.
You, if you, I want you to understand, there are day-to-day decisions that especially Mr. Patruliano makes that if we have to wait for answers, could have a detrimental effect on things that happen.
Then reach out to your Building and Grounds Committee head.
And again, if that's, if that's the direction of the full board, I understand it. But don't, don't make the comment, I wasn't given that direction to go to committees to make day-to-day decisions.
But I think, I think, I respond, I think you're missing the point here. This wasn't looked upon as a day-to-day decision. The decision, we hired a consultant, we hired an engineer, specs were drawn up. There was meeting after meeting discussions on this field. And then, all of a sudden, all these change orders, we have one on the agenda tonight. And I just was handed another package of another change. I think the issue comes about not as a day-to-day thing, but that we hired an engineer, we hired a consultant, we paid these people. We were in a hurry, everybody wanted to get it done. We held a special meeting just to address this particular issue. And now, all of a sudden, it appears, oh, well, let's change. We didn't get it right the first time. And that's, that's how the feeling is coming across here.
And again, I'm going to call that part of our day-to-day operations. That Mr. Patruliano brought in the coaches and the athletic director to a meeting to show them the scope of work that was going on at that field. Concerns were raised. There was no additional cost for a change order to be brought before the board. The change order did not move forward. That was a recommendation from the coaches, brought back to the board for the board to decide. That's nothing different than we've done on any other project in my ten years here. That if something occurred in the field, we've explored it, we got the cost of it, we bring it back to the full board.
Well, the way, the way I had seen the email, the way I had read it was that additional work was done.
No, there is no additional, the change order is there.
So, there was no additional work done? And no additional costs were incurred, other than the original...
The only additional cost is what we found the other day with the flooding, where we brought in the engineer to do a core sample and help us determine why do we have so much excess water? That is part of our day-to-day operations that we do with any of our consultants that we work with. Being an attorney, the auditor, other consultants that Dennis works with. He has an asbestos consultant, that if we find asbestos, he calls them in.
I think some of the frustration came about where we had spent all this time working on this project and we did call all these professionals in. And I think the frustration was we thought we had it done and we had it right. And I think that's where the frustration is coming from.
And so did we, and then we, and based on that findings from them, we're finding that the property adjacent to us is probably what's causing the problem for our neighbor that didn't maintain it.
Right, and I understand that point, but from my point of view, from my frustration level is we paid an engineer, we paid a consultant. Now you're coming back, oh, well, guys, we didn't do it right. Is that what you're telling us? And that's where I think...
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that someone made, someone asked for additional work to be done. Nothing different than we've ever done before. We requested the change order, the pricing. The contractor has not been told to move forward. That was what's on the board tonight. We withdrew it, so the contractor's not getting any additional money.
And you assured us that the project is going to move forward.
Right now, I'm being told the project's moving forward. I'm not out there on the day-to-day functioning of that field. That's where Mr. Patruliano works with the contractors and the engineers. When he finds something out there that he's uncertain of, we discuss it and we try to figure out what's the best solution to come back to the board with.
I just think this project, there's been a level of frustration because at every meeting, the cost keeps going up. So, I think this particular project...
Because I need to know, is it the desire of the full board that anytime we need answers from a consultant, that we need approval from the committee or the full board before Mr. Patruliano or I move forward?
Well, if it's about more money, that we're going to be putting more money in, I think you should have...
But again, more money in regards to working with a consultant? Because I have that authority to bring in the consultants as part of my day-to-day operations. I do not have the authority to give a contractor additional funds, which I did not do. The change order was before the board, for that change in work. That I don't have the authority to do.
Emilio, let me clarify this, okay? My frustration is, is that all of a sudden, we're spending another six thousand dollars on seed, okay? And that was beyond what the original scope of work was, you know? And the French drain and all that. What happened is, I'll be very honest with you. We had an administrator and coaches get involved in this project, other than what the, and if I read beyond the original scope of work, that's what the engineer said. Am I correct?
And I, and I don't fault Mr. Patruliano for bringing in...
It's not, I give Dennis credit.
I think he did the right thing by bringing in the coaches and the administrators.
I think we're getting into personnel issues here, which I'm just discussing with the public.
If we were discussing the project generally, it's fine. You can all express your concern about money and whatever else. But to the extent we're talking about personnel matters, we should always be aware that those should be done in a close session.
Let's just have the Buildings and Grounds Committee meet and discuss the baseball field and come back with a recommendation. Fair.
Well, no, well, it should be including the field hockey fields as well, not just the baseball field. That was one of the things that we talked about back in the beginning. It was questioned several times, that anything that we do, this baseball field is going to address that too. So, not just the baseball field, but the whole, the whole thing.
The baseball field project.
Which encompasses...
Right, which, and questions were specifically asked about the hockey field.
Right, and as I said, we addressed the ward issue. No one thought about addressing the playing field between a sod and grass field. The request is to have something that is more cohesive, I guess is the word to use, so that we transition from the two types of sod and not so evident.
Anything else before I open it up to the public? Okay, I'll open it up to the public portion for any and all questions. Does anybody have any questions, comments, about anything?
Margaret Gil Cummins, Twenty-Touchman Street. I don't know where it begins. To discuss finances or the right to move the election. First of all, I agree with Mr. Bichada. I do not want to take my right away to vote. I'm trying to petition the council to put their budgets up on referendum or their main capital projects to the public. Right now, they want to build a huge Taj Mahal public works building. And part of the council was sort of the termination of the business administrator. And that bothers me. And they feel what they want, but the public be damned. And I think, as a resident and a taxpayer, that we have every right to vote. And I don't care if you put a cap on it or not. And you think a two percent cap is like nothing? Well, try when you're on a fixed income. And your social security didn't raise for three years and whatever. And all this money goes out and everything else goes up and up. And I feel sorry for a lot of residents, especially seniors in this town, who helped build this town or the backbone of the community. They can't afford it. Sure, they want a good education system and everything else in the school. But why do you let capital projects deplete as it has and let it go so far? There's something wrong. For all the schools to deteriorate with their roofs? And I mentioned before, you don't have a roof, you don't have a building. But you do it piecemeal. Apparently, the Board of Education has let it go so bad that it cost millions and millions with a referendum, again. Now, to take the right to vote, I think is wrong. And I agree, I feel it's politicizing the board. I mean, the next will have disappointed boards, maybe like New Runz of herself. And I think it's wrong to take my right to vote away. Be it for a member of the board or, or the budget. And I really want to petition the council by putting their budget, trust me. And this piece of paper you gave me, did you look about several, the second highest increase, a hundred and five percent in ten years? I know we've lost the majority of our industry. But look across the line. It has really increased in this town.
Well, that's because, that's because the, the increase in the municipal budget over ten years was seventy-four percent. And the school district was less than half of that. That's why, Mrs. Gil Cummins, and all those things you mentioned. And again, I mentioned this before at the microphone, that this current board has done more for capital flow project improvements than any board in recent memory. And the reason it was neglected in the past, because every time budgets got down, we lost the roof, we lost this, we lost that. And, and a budget going down again is not going to help that concern. Everything you say, I hear from my own mother.
But I also...
And my answer to her is, you talk about seniors, it's all here all the time, it's seniors, seniors, seniors. I got a newsflash, there's more people that live in this town than seniors, okay? We have to take all that into consideration. And if you think, Mrs. Gil Cummins, and you're very schooled in this, that we're going to have a zero-budget increase, that's never going to happen. You're never going to have a zero increase in taxes, never going to happen, because we have eight hundred employees working...
Well, I'm certainly happy I don't live in Jackson, Mr. McEnam, because I've seen their taxes go through the roof, probably because of your salary, who knows? But Jackson's, Jackson's taxes with their Taj Mahal high schools, believe me. I know several people that live there and complained about their taxes. So, don't try to do the several what has happened in Jackson.
Let's keep the conversation to say. Okay, my point is, Mrs. Gil Cummins, and you know very well, because you're schooled in this, that, you know, this budget is going to go down and it's, and what's going to happen? You, you're very familiar with the Borough Council. They're going to cut this budget again, it doesn't mean it'll happen. They're going to sit here and say, okay, Mr. Bichada, which one of your capital program are we going to cut? And they're going to have the same problem. You're going to come to the microphone next to you and say...
Well, maybe you should cut other places, maybe you should cut some administrative positions that are possibly unnecessary.
On that school report card, also look at the administrator to student ratio in Sabo. We're one of the very lowest in the state. Now, I know you hate when I...
But the state is a problem.
Well, I understand.
So, that doesn't mean, so the state is wrong, we should be wrong too?
No, we're not wrong. Mrs. Gil Cummins, we've had this conversation many times.
State is a problem.
Yeah, and she's staring at you.
The part, the part I don't believe, and I believe you would be politicizing the board. It would be very costly for a candidate to run, to get their message across. Signs, whatever. And I agree with Mr. Chalk that you turn around and have...
Mark this day on your calendar.
This is a first. Mark this day on your calendar, I'm excited.
When you, you're flooded with literature, and how do you get your message across? And it's true, I agree. And I think the people that are really interested do come out and vote. But the problem being, the voter turnout has been low everywhere, even for all elections. And that's sad, the public is just too complacent, and I don't know what to do about that. But as far as budgets and candidates, no, I don't think, who knows if it's going to work? If you're not forced to do it, see what happens in another community, if it does work and what it's like. But to jump into this, because you're forced by legislature, I know they're looking for a better voter turnout. But, I'm sorry. And as far as freezing the budget, I think they should, even with a cap. Thank goodness they put a cap on it, because these people can't afford it. New Jersey's the highest property tax. And what did they do and Christie did? Governor Christie, ten percent reduction on income, never mentioned property. And what's killing the people is the property tax. Thank you. Oh, my question also on finances, how much money is left from the referendum of the high school? When you mentioned that we have thirty-some thousand?
After the approval tonight, zero.
Oh, so that's washing you now, then? My other question, which I didn't understand, and I should have brought it up when you voted on it. On the finance, on number three, the E-Rate consulting, could you please explain what that's for?
There's a regulation by the federal government that allows you to apply for rebates and, basically rebates for anything that you do technology-based in your district. So, these are consultants that come in, have expertise in how to write the grants, and maximize your amount of refund that you get.
So, it's, we're paying a company...
Allison Hoiberg, Seven Driftwood Drive. I'm just trying to understand the whole voting thing. If it, if the school budget goes in April, it's still a vote to the public, though?
Correct.
Okay. So, it's not that the public wouldn't get to vote on it, it's just that they would have more time if it were in November?
No, it isn't November, there's no vote on the school budget. As long as they were within the cap.
Two percent.
Two percent.
For now, two percent, which we normally, when we come out, we normally do come in with a cap.
Please, it's not really two percent, but there are waivers. There were built-in waivers, like Mr. Sia, you can have waivers built in to go above the two percent. So, be careful with that.
So, it's not the budget in November that people would be voting on, it would be the board members?
Correct.
Okay. Because I was thinking if it was the budget and, yeah, I mean, definitely, I think people should have, you know, to vote. So, I say, you know, let's do it for April. But hypothetically, let's say we wanted to get some kind of referendum going. Would it have to coincide with the vote for the school budget? Or is a referendum, when else would you have a vote?
There are five, I think there are five. There are five, you just sort of show, there are five dates throughout the year. Boards of Education tend to do them in April because it coincides with the board election. They're already having the election, it costs less, and it's just the time people are aware of issues related to school boards. But there are five dates, including the April date, throughout the school year, that a Board of Education can go to referendum.
But then it costs money, it costs, it would cost you in addition twenty-five thousand dollars to bring a referendum up.
The board has to reimburse the County Board of Elections for running an election.
So, would you be able to do a referendum in November?
November's not one of the dates, I think it's, boy, I think September, December...
September, March.
March.
April and June.
So, we coincide with an already...
I think they want in late June.
That's why we always did it in April, so it would coincide.
Right.
That's right. Like when we, when we sent out a referendum to, for the two-point-two million addition to the high school, we did that off, off an election cycle.
We did it in December.
First, second Tuesday in, second Tuesday in December.
In December, that was an off-schedule referendum.
But that, that encourages a twenty-five thousand dollar cost.
Encourages cost.
Yeah, but if you ran it with an election that was already going on...
You're already paying, there's additional cost.
Right, this high school referendum is done in April with the regular budget.
So, hypothetically, if there was a referendum that would be out there to do an addition onto some elementary schools and such? Hypothetically, hypothetically, is there enough time to get something like that for April? I mean, it's already...
It is, I'll say it again, although I know you might be working with him on this. There's a process, or what the bond attorney for the Board of Education would go through to get the question submitted and get the approval or the wording of the question for the Department of Education. And it's, it's more involved, and you're already in February, so I would say you're too late.
So, what's the earliest date that you're opening at, like a September?
The next earliest, well, the next earliest date, we believe, would be June.
I don't know if it's, I don't have the statute.
You don't know September, definitely September is the next earliest, there's a possibility that another one...
But if you're going to look to incur twenty-five thousand dollar cost to have an extra vote, you want to make sure that it's going to pass.
Correct.
Although the board won't advocate that one way or the other, of course. But the, of course, the board's not only, I'm sorry, the lawyers, you know, throwing the water on the, on the... But the, the reasons, the board's not supposed to take your position one way or the other. The board is posting the election theoretically, so it can't take any position one way or the other.
Right, but I mean...
But yes, from your perspective, if you want it to pass...
Especially with all the tax money, I want to be sure that it gets...
Let me tell you, there's actually...
History has told us December is a fine month to have a referendum.
People are in the spirit of giving, and there's, there is actually percentages that I think the School Board Association has put together that actually gives a percentage on, on just history of passage rates for different months. And there's some that are, December, I think, is really good, maybe for those reasons, although I'm not a sociologist. And then there's some that are not as good, like September, for example.
Just give that to me, he's just still voting money. Okay, that's just... Okay. All right, so, so the vote for April or November would, is not, not enough time for a referendum, for your sake. But if there were hypothetically some kind of referendum, we would want to make sure that it would definitely pass. Whatever needed, however we rally...
If we decide on a referendum, when would be the next date that's available, like September?
The question is, Emilio keeps talking about this June date. I just don't see the June date right now, although I'm trying to visualize the statute.
I think September.
I think September is the first date after April, that's right.
September, September, March.
Right, so we can do it after September as well.
And would that give enough time to do construction for the twenty...
For the hypothetical addition?
Hypothetical addition for 2014.
No, that'd be real tough.
For September, 2014?
September 12.
You have two years of construction.
Yeah, it depends on the size of the addition.
That would be September.
We did Samson within eighteen months.
Thirteen is the next one.
Samson's done in eighteen months and, and war.
The redistricting committee is having a meeting, and we will, will update you, okay?
Because I have a problem about moving the vote, but if there is, if there is no vote to move it to November, I, I just think that's just, it's bad.
That's what?
So, it's, it's not a good idea. I would, I would rather have people come out and be able to vote. I know it's, it's historically not a big turnout. One of the things, looking at it from the parent's perspective, when they come in and give the overall view, I feel, and, and it's not to say that a lot of work doesn't go into it, I feel it's very cartoony. And I feel that maybe you need to talk to the parents a little bit more on an adult level and leave kind of those crayon marks off and just really give, you know, whole, whole part facts.
Right, and Allison, we do discuss that at the PIC committees, and I know you've come to some of the PIC meetings. And I'm sure you're busy, I, I get that. So, but we have discussed that with the parents at the PIC meetings.
Have they ever had an opinion? I mean, this is just my own opinion. They like to see the cartoony kind of...
Well, I never went out there. I mean, we can show it all to you anyway, I'm, I'm not...
I'm just saying, from looking at it from, from the past three years, and then going online and looking at the real budget, I would much rather be given the actual budget to look at than something that's condensed and I feel it's not really conveying a full picture.
Did somebody put their real budget online?
We have, we're required by order to, it's on our website, to use a friendly posture.
No, no, but do we put the, not the, the entire budget? Do we, do we put that on the website?
We put the state format on the website.
Yeah, which, you know, you can read through and, and, you know, figure things out, too. And also, I don't know if it would help to have visual things, you know? If the roof at the middle school is that bad, then show pictures of how bad the roof really is. I think the people, you know, would react a little bit better. If they, you know, everybody says, okay, that roof is bad.
I think the pictures of the hallways more than the roof.
Or, so then show the buckets in the hall or something, just to get people's emotions maybe into it a little bit more instead of just saying that they're bad. Well, everybody's roof is bad. How bad is bad? I'm just, you know... I'm just, you know.
Those of us who've been through the middle school could attest how bad it is.
Right. And, you know, to just try to get more parents to come out and vote, I don't know, couldn't get anybody coming to the meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Mrs. Backer, you mentioned that we can discuss any, any topics. I don't know whether you're aware or not, but on February 22nd, the temple will be before the Board of Adjustment for an interpretation of the ordinance governing building a temple on that property. They have bought property to the rear of the temple, which will park 600 cars. They expect to hold festivals, which will bring in as many as 12,000 people. Now, your school is located so close to the temple, and it will affect you, it will paralyze the town, not only Washington Road, that's the main artery just out of Banwood, near Banwood. And I just wondered if the school, if, if they're aware of it, and if they are considering presenting their opposition to it, not so much the building of a temple in another location, but at this location.
Well, actually, we have a, a board member on the planning board, but from what I understand, if the planning, the zoning board is only addressing the housing portion, correct, and it's the planning board that's actually addressing the, the temple?
It would probably get, well, actually, no application has been made yet, what they want now is an interpretation of the ordinance.
Right, for the zoning, but is there an application before the planning board?
No, no, ma'am, there's not, and, and this temple, I think a lot of people will be shocked, once they see what this thing is gonna look like.
We've seen it.
You'll see this from any place on Deerfield Road, you will see. It has not come, it's a big concern, one of the problems, the, the planning board is subject to New Jersey land use laws, and, and it's illegal, and the town has, has, has realized that in prior litigation, to, to turn down an application due to traffic.
But even if it puts a town to complete stop?
Oh, it will do that.
Six hundred cars?
We can use you to come to the meeting, there's a public portion of the planning board, it's a very big concern.
Well, it's at, it's at the zoning board.
Yes.
February 22nd, and Board of Adjustment.
Right.
Just for the interpretation, so, I just wanted to call to your attention, and you should, you can be there, okay? Now, in connection, in the connection, while we're discussing tonight, you know, I've been around quite a while, you know, and they always refer, we do it for the children, we do it for the children. But we were children once, and now we're seniors. And we're in a position now, you know, your bank accounts aren't earning any interest, normally you'd get interest, see it from one month to another, you're using up all your life savings, and it's gonna come to a point when the savings are all gonna disappear. And it's the school, it's the school taxes that are doing it. I'm not gonna move from Syracuse, I'm gonna stay here, I can go to Arkansas, live for a hundred dollars a year, but I won't do it. This is my town, I love it, I don't seem like to see what's happening to it. But these, this thing about the, not changing the election to November, I've been around a long time, and I know that politicians sometimes come up with some idea to change the atmosphere of the election. What they wanna do is get people to vote totally in front, or be totally confused, and not even know what they're doing, and I know that's what's gonna happen. You cannot allow this to happen. My, my girlfriend gets absentee ballots every year, she didn't get one this year. She had to call the county to get one, that's a new policy. Some politician figured that was a good way, this, what senior's gonna call for an absentee ballot? They hope, they hope to get them in the mail, so for some reason, strategically, they changed that. Now they're, now what they're gonna do here, they wanna change it to November. You're gonna go into the polling booth, you're not gonna even know who's running for what position. And you're gonna, it's gonna cause a lot of confusion, so I hope that, mind if you're gonna vote on it, that you will vote no. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak? Cheerleaders, do you wish to speak? You look like you wanna come out of your chair, otherwise we're gonna close the meeting.
Hi, I'm Jody Viola, Acreston Avenue. I believe you all received an email referring to an incident that occurred at the bomber banquet last Sunday. Do you need me, should I read it, or should I just explain the?
We read it. Seven, seven times.
Okay, basically, the bottom line is that, you know, eight of the senior cheerleaders were basically humiliated, embarrassed by the Touchdown Club, when they did not receive any of their senior honors. We did have a meeting with the Touchdown Club last night, and they felt as though that because we didn't excel in their fundraising and/or their volunteering, that the girls weren't entitled to them, and they were pretty much adamant about that. They did, at this point, give us the ability that we can order this stuff on our own, and basically, that is how it was left at the end.
No, I didn't, I mean.
Lori H., 40 Norton Street, I'm here as a parent tonight, I'm also a board of education employee. However, right now, I'm gonna speak on behalf of the girls, and myself, and the other parents who were involved in this. We went to the banquet, and unbeknownst to us, when the girls came up to us and told us that there was no, not gonna be any senior plaques or senior awards for them, we were absolutely shocked. We were told, like Jody said, from the Touchdown Club, that it was a decision that they made, last night they informed us that it was a few months prior to the banquet. Then when we asked them, they couldn't really give us a date when they had made this decision.
But you were never notified of this at all?
We were never notified, you were never told. Well, the beginning paperwork told us that we had to do this fundraiser, that it was a must, it was necessary, and then there was, a few lines later, an option to return the raffles, and there wasn't any type of consequences or any alternative suggestions to be done, if you were not able to do the fundraiser. So, like I said, the girls went to the banquet, they didn't know anything about this was gonna, that this was gonna happen. The coaching staff was not informed until very, very late, that these, actually, I don't even think before they went there that they were, they knew that they were gonna hold these gifts away from them. The girls weren't even announced for their awards. There was 15 senior cheerleaders, seven of them got up, they received their awards, they got applause, they walked away with an armful of gifts, as well as their senior plaque, acknowledging all of their accomplishments throughout their high school cheerleading career, and the other eight girls had to sit there and watch in disgrace. They were not called up by their coach, because the coach felt that, she felt terrible enough that the girls weren't receiving anything, and she felt that by mentioning their names, and asking them to come up, and presenting them with absolutely nothing, was even more devastating for them, and more humiliating. So we, as parents, do not at all hold Ms. Master Angela, or Coach Najjar, at fault. Coach Najjar did what he needed to do to, to try to hide some of the embarrassment for his three players, who also didn't get their votes.
I have a question, who was the person from the Touchdown Club that would communicate all this to, like, your coaches? Like, that they couldn't prepare, or even, like, reached out to you to tell you that you girls, you know, this was gonna happen?
Communication, actually, was probably the main concern with us last night. There's nothing that we can do for the girls, the night's over, it's all done with, they're getting whatever, you know, they want through our own funding, and that's fine, but I don't want, and Jody doesn't want, and none of the other parents want, that ever happened to any of their kids. As far as the contact person, there are six members of the board for the Touchdown Club.
So those six parents that could reach out?
Yes, there is one secretary, one treasurer, one president, I'm sorry, one treasurer, one secretary, one vice president, one president, and two trustees, and they're all the voting board members. And from what we understood from our meeting last night, five of the six members voted that this is the way to handle it.
And this was never relieved to anyone of those, I'm saying?
No, it was never communicated that there was gonna be consequences for not participating in the fundraiser.
Until that night.
Until that night. And the excuses that we got were numerous, because many of us parents went on to different board members, and we got different excuses from each one. Myself, I myself was a previous Touchdown Club member for two years, volunteered for two years for my voice PR, and I was also a former board member myself. Many times, we came up against the, the problems of not, the children not participating, or not having the right funding, but the allocation of funds were always based, and our decisions were always based for the good of the children, for the good of all the children. No way would we ever, Lenny Master Angela started the Touchdown Club, Cheryl Por, both of them are deceased now, as the one that I would sit there, and countless number of times, we would say, you know what, I don't know what we're gonna do, we really wanted to probably make the same kind of decision that this board made, but with the best interests of the children in mind, we never did. Dr. Alpana, when we go back to school, maybe a year or two ago, when you talked to all of us as staff and, and faculty, you said to us that we should never underestimate the effects that our words or our actions are gonna have on any given child that's in our care. As an educator, I feel that when I go to work, that's exactly the words that I live by. I try to do it in my home life, and I do it in my professional life, and for people who are gonna have this type of contact, or this type of influence on our children, they need to be held accountable to the same values, and they weren't. And, and that's what upset us most. It wasn't the monetary things, it wasn't the material things that the girls didn't get, it was the disgrace that they were, they were publicly made an example of.
They were humiliated.
And I just don't want it to ever happen to anybody else's child.
Well, Lori, say, when I received this letter this morning, I don't think there's anything in the past 10, 15 years of my life that has made me more angry than this letter. I read it three times before I contacted Mrs. Backer, and then Dr. Alpana. I was at the banquet, and I've always had the banquet, and I don't know if everyone knows, my daughter was a cheerleader for four years. And every year, I dealt with this mandatory fundraising, and every year, I just wrote the check, said, press on, and I know some people can't do that, and I don't think a, a, a student, I feel very sorry for these girls, should be left out for recognition at the pinnacle of their high school career, over their financial contribution. That, to me, is so egregious, and so far off my radar screen.
An absolute disgrace.
I watched girls come to my house and make these candy things, and decorate the boys' lockers, and my daughter was the captain, and, and this is what they did, they wanted to do it, it was a spirit kind of thing, and I watched every year that they do this, and I always felt that the cheerleaders were considered second-class citizens, and it always pissed me off. And, and I, after reading this letter, I regretted I did not take action a couple of years ago, but I was reluctant, being the president of the board, to kind of weigh in on an organization. And we all live in this world that the Touchdown Club's a private entity, they raise their own money, they can do what they want. But the fact is, that the sayable bomber football squad, the cheerleading squad, belong to this school district. The students are under our charge, and the coaches are employees of this district. And to say that the school district has no say in what gets done, I've asked Dr. Alpana, who's gonna call a meeting with the leadership of the Touchdown Club, the coaches involved, myself and Mrs. Backer, and we're gonna get their attention. Because this, to me, I, I feel so sorry for these kids, that I can't use any words in English language I can think of to express it. And the last sentence of this letter, whoever wrote it, is the one that struck me the most, saying, the damage to our children is done, they can never be given back that night. And, and that just infuriates me every time I think about it, and I'm no less calm today, now, than I was when I read this letter this morning. This is totally unacceptable, and what we had is adults that failed the kids, okay? And we're looking at that, we're gonna meet with this, and we're gonna explain how we think is how students should be treated. And some of these cheerleaders, I've always said this, I've never seen a squad this big, and the current leadership, or more talented, these young ladies, some of them formally trained gymnasts, they're formally trained dancers, and they're a big part of this sports program. And I wanna make it very clear to everybody, that a cheerleader is no less important than a football player, or a field hockey player, or a soccer player. And I've always resented the fact that we look at that, and the comment, I would really like to know who made that comment at Peter Pan Diner, about what the cheerleaders are, because that just infuriates me, and I have a pretty good idea.
Can I tell you something, what we come to, what we came to find out last night, is that the person who made that comment, and I'm sure the, the Touchdown Club board can answer for themselves, the person who made that comment was the one of the five that did not vote for this, this decision. We were absolutely shocked, absolutely shocked.
This is, this is so unacceptable, that I just feel so sorry for these young ladies, and, and it offends me personally, having, having, having cheerleaders for years, and knowing these kids, that, I remember them sitting, standing in the pouring rain, freezing in the snow, doing all these types of things out there, supporting the football team, and this is how they're treated. I mean, I, I just, I don't think I'm gonna get over this in the next couple of years. We're gonna have this meeting, Dr. Alpana was agreed to have it, and we'll talk about it, and, and we're gonna solve this problem. And I think what we owe the girls is to make sure this never, ever happens again, and that's gonna be my personal crusade, and I can guarantee it, if you stand there right now.
That's a good example of how not to behave for your girl, if you get anything out of it, it's like, that's how you don't behave, okay?
And I love that cheer, I love that cheer with the pom-poms.
Hi, my name is Courtney H., I'm with her. I'm in the place, so I'm used to an audience, so don't be shy. I grew up with two brothers playing in the football program here, and I, like, sat there, and I watched every single game, and I just looked up at those cheerleaders, and I just knew I wanted to be one of them, and I was always a cheerleader, bomber cheerleader, and I grew up wanting to be like them, and when I got here, and I became a bomber cheerleader, it was just like, it completed me, like, I know it sounds cliche and everything, but it completed me, and when they just didn't recognize me for being a bomber cheerleader, it really hurt me, and I did cry at the banquet. So, I just want them to know that it really meant a lot to me, and I know if they took away from it, wasn't it right?
Thank you very much.
Cheerleaders support, cheerleaders wrap.
Are there any other questions or comments from the public?
Is there an aptitude issue?
If not, I'll need a motion for a decision.
The election thing?
Oh, okay, you're right, sorry.
You should do something either way.
Okay.
I wanna make, I wanna make a motion.
Oh, okay, all right.
I wanna make a motion, I wanna make a motion that we move the school board elections to November, and with that, let the vote, let the budget stay as it is, without the vote for on the 2% cap.
Is there a second?
We had an opportunity to leave.
Okay, so we have no need to read the resolution, correct?
Need a motion.
So is motion, is there a motion to?
We need a motion, please.
Still moved, second.
Where section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of republicans from a meeting certain certificate, and whereas its public body of opinion, such certificate strictly exists, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of the boroughs, save the county. As follows, the public shall be excluded from discussion of any acts upon the errant and specified subject matter. General nature of the subject matter to be discussed as follows, personnel, curricular, co-curricular appointments, pending slash pending, pending, potential litigation, to do no purchase, sale, or vote event at all. It is anticipated at this time that the most stated subject matter shall be made public, and at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists, this resolution shall take effect immediately. Mr. Baupco.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Syaikh, Mr. DePinto.
I'll actually be voting no, because I think that we're discussing things that fall under the per-